I'd like to begin with the roll call of the planning board members present. Please state your name and say present. Clark Brewer.
Clark Brewer, present.
Tom Callahan.
I'm here.
Paul Collieri.
Paul Collieri here.
Paul Grady.
You're muted.
Thank you, Clark. Paul Grady here.
Thank you, Eric Potter.
Eric Potter here.
Amy Glassmeyer here. I'd like to ask staff to identify themselves as present. Lauren Lind.
Good evening.
Jen Orem.
Good evening.
Hi, Jen.
Hello.
They will be assisting us in this evening. I want to begin by making a few introductory comments. The first is, is there any public comment for items that are not on the agenda? Lauren, you have nobody that's indicating that there is something they wish to place on the agenda?
No, I don't see. We have one attendee in the audience. It's actually Cassie who will be joining us for the zoning bylaw joint portion of the meeting this evening. And there's nothing in the Q and A.
Great, thank you very much. Lauren, could you please explain to the public how they can engage the board?
Certainly. So the process for engaging with the board is through the question and answer function that you'll see at the bottom of the screen. We just ask you to input your full name and address. And you can, you can leave questions there for us to view or, you know, just notify that you have something and we'll, we'll access you that way at the appropriate time.
Thank you for that. Let me ask planning board members, is there anything that is not on the agenda that you wish to have us note?
Nope.
All right, thank you. So tonight we have a number of items of business. The first item of business is that we will review and approve the changes in the documents related to the 12487 Elm Street HV BOD special permit and site plan review. What we will do is we will go through the changes that were requested last time we were met. And I will ask at each item that each member of the planning board say their name and approve the change. So that's item one. Item two, we will have our building inspector, Mr. John Howland, speak to us about the comings and goings of planning related issues here in town since we've seen him last. Item three is we will then adjourn to a joint hearing of the master plan implementation committee zoning bylaw working group, where a discussion will occur among the bylaw working group members and the members of the planning board. After that, we will move to administrative items, including minutes and any other pieces of business that we have yet to attend. So with that, I'd like to begin with the Harbor Village Business Overlay District special permit and site plan revisions to seek approval of the planning board members. Once we have completed that, if we all approve each item, then I will ask you to make a motion to approve the changes. I will ask for a second. I will call for a roll call vote and we will conclude that part. The second item.
Amy, since we've already used up five minutes of our meeting, how are we going to possibly go through 30 pages of this decision in, in the remaining five minutes?
We are not going to go through the 30 pages of the document. We are going to go through the one, two, three, four, five, six pages where we requested changes in the language because we agreed to do that at our last meeting.
Yeah, but I found a missing section.
Thank you for identifying that. Then we will need to, so are you suggesting that we will need to go through the entire document?
Well, I, I don't really want to and we don't have time for it because we only have four minutes left. But, but the one section that I thought was missing was, was after final revised site plan. Number two, building and site specifications.
What page?
Let's see, in, on this one, it's, on this one, it's, it should, it was before open space and public amenity areas, page 21. So between the end of final revised site plan stuff. At our last go around, we had something called commercial non-residential space. Commercial condo association shall be submitted. Methodology to create robust activity. That whole section either went someplace else or it disappeared.
Guess we got to meet next week then.
If, hang on just a minute, please, and let me discuss with staff. Is Caris North here at the meeting? Lauren Lind?
No, she's not here with us at the meeting. So what I'll suggest is I need to look through this again and state, I was just trying to figure out, but I couldn't follow that quickly. And what I'll suggest is that we take this up at our next meeting and have another additional week to review.
That's fair. Yeah, it's just the section that covers the, basically the commercial condo and its representation, its, its relationship to the residential thing. We talked about it and it could exist someplace else. Looks like Tom's, Tom knows where it is.
Just a minute. Okay, so Tom Callahan.
I don't, I don't have the draft in front of me because I thought this was going to be pretty simple tonight. But earlier on, that section three, the part about the condo, I believe is moved later on to a section that's called site governance.
Okay.
I forget is section 12, 13, something like that.
Okay, so.
However, however, I think the first condition of what had been Roman numer three about commercial space, I believe that might have survived. So that Roman numeral three had just one condition and the condo conditions were moved to the site governance.
Okay, I see it. I found it.
Yeah, I, I'd have to look at the draft again, which I apologize, I don't have in front of me, about whether the first condition of Roman numeral three survived.
The only thing is, it doesn't say that the, the condo need to be submitted for approval.
Yeah, it should, it should say that in the site governance section. I guess we're going to have to take.
Yeah, I, I have to say. I, I'm going to ask Lauren Lind and I'm going to take her recommendation. We're not going to do real time editing on the document. It is significantly difficult to do. It also has liabilities of continuing to find errors. Lauren, can you please make a recommendation about what we do now?
Certainly, I would recommend that I will connect with Clark and double check on this or Tom, whoever, and we'll, we'll make sure that this is squared away and that it's addressed. If the language was inadvertently lost, we'll replace it and we'll have this corrected. And you can take this up at the top of your next meeting.
Okay, do we need a motion for this decision?
No, you don't.
All right. Thank you, Clark. Eagle eye. And just a minute, thank you, Clark. Would you like to speak?
Nope.
Okay, all right, well, this is gonna, let's see. In our next plan of material is to speak with our building inspector, Mr. Hanlon. Is there reason that I need to go to the time that I, that he's originally scheduled? Or can we continue the discussion now?
It's not a public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Hello, John, how are you?
John's right on time. Six forty.
You're, you're muted?
Yes, now I'm off mute.
Okay, so we're, we are here with bated breath and all ears turned to you.
Well, not, not too much big news, but what we've decided to do, I spoke with Lauren about it briefly too. We've had a couple permits, applications come across our desk, but they were real close on the lodge home review. One was three feet off, so I requested the client make application to you guys for review. It was just, they say, I'm not gonna, they come in at 3497 square foot, but it's just too close. So, you know, things like that, we're just kind of picking up on now. And, you know, that way they could prove their point to you guys. And, you know, if it's under, it's under, if it's not, it's not, but it's just too close to the call, I think.
John, did they, did they provide a certified square footage calculation, one stamped by an engineer?
That was one of the requests, so they have not done that yet there. And as they say, it just, it seems too close, really pushing the envelope on, on that. So I just figured it was, seemed to be better to send it to you guys and, and there. So as the information comes up, they might come back with a, you know, a smaller calculation. But, you know, when it starts to creep up within a, you know, a quarter of a percentage point as to where they should be, it's, you know, I think it should be reviewed.
But, but I think your point, anyone that's close should have a certified stamped calculation that a professional engineer or a professional architect puts their license to kind of guarantee to you, so you don't have to, you don't have to mess around. I mean, even if it's within 5%.
Yeah, I mean, you know, you start getting 5%, you're 200 feet, you know, that, that's reasonable. Here we talk at three feet. I just, even with certification, just seemed too close to, you know, too much room for error. So I would have requested the certification.
But if it's at all close, they should give you a certification to prove one way or the other.
Right, and that's what I requested and so we can walk through that.
I'd like to make a point around this. I was contacted by a neighbor regarding the project on Jerusalem Road and Wendy Hill. And their request was what was going to be the mechanism by which the pre-construction elevation would be estimated. And let me just give you a bit of backstory, which is that on a previous structure, we were given a estimate based on two data points. And the topography was substantially variable. And estimates were in contention. So I'd like to ask you how you would advise, or what, what kind of response would you provide a resident who's next door as to how we would proceed with the determination of the pre-construction elevation?
For, for example, we had a call come in today for a raise demolition of a building. So, but they, there weren't any plans as to what was going to take its place. So as part of demolition, they asked some questions as to, you know, what I need for demolition. I see, you know, water on site, all the utilities disconnected, and also requested a site plan with the elevations of the existing area building. So that way we have a starting point. I think in the past, sometimes the, the demo permit would come and it would just happen and we wouldn't have any records of what was there. So that's, again, some of the stuff will catch a little early in the, in the demolition process. Because sometimes people will do them together, other times they won't. So, you know, I think that's going to help us come forward too. So we have those, the data and the information so we could compare it going further.
All right, so when I get a query like that, I happen to live in the part of town where there's a lot of change taking place. Should I just direct them to you as a citizen so that they can talk to you about the procedure? How to think about it? What's happening?
Sure, we've got to field those calls regularly during the week.
All right, thank you. Tom Callahan?
You might, you might hear this later, but in the zoning working group, you know, we had talked about a change in the definition of height to deal with this situation. It came out of 580 Jerusalem. And it was a proposal that there'd be 12 points around the perimeter that would be the measure. But, John, correct me if I'm wrong, but I guess for the moment we are not going to go forward with a bylaw change, but we are going forward with a policy change internally in John's office that is going to require at least four different points of measurement around.
I, you know, I think that.
Wait a minute, Clark, wait a minute, please. I want to, I would like you to raise your hand.
Yeah, I'll raise my hand.
Okay.
In answer, in answer to what the answer is to citizens, that's apparently going to be our new policy going forward.
So, Tom, I think the word is procedure and not policy?
Whatever.
Yeah, we're gonna, we are.
It, by the way, it should be a change in the bylaw instead of a procedure or a policy, but I lost that argument for the moment, so.
John?
I guess two things. One, I think that the change might be coming at some point, but at least we're going to request, you know, going forward, at least a minimum number of points so we get some idea of where the building stands currently. So we can, you know, a lot of the points too, we'll have the grade, the existing grade as requirement. So we could use that point and that information going forward before there are grade changes. So I think that the grade change is probably more important than the, the existing height because we'll have the, the old height or the new height coming forward.
Right, thank you, Clark.
So thanks, the, the problem that we had at 580 was that it wasn't like an evenly sloping site. It had a big pieces, a piece of ledge on the east side and then most of the grade was, was down low. So the problem was by taking two points, the high and the low, you didn't get what's called in the bylaw as mean, mean level. It's mean is, is defined in the dictionary as average. So, you, you know, you could take, it, it really depends on how big the footprint is. The time they said, some towns make you do it every 10 feet. You know, you, you could do it up against the building and then 10 feet out and then every 10 feet along, along the perimeter. But you, you kind of have to use your judgment. But two points on a, on a kind of uneven slope property, if it's an even slope or flat, then two points could be fine. But not for a lot of the ledgy, weird uneven slope stuff we had.
John, would you like to comment?
Yeah, two comments. One, the, the topographical is going to help us give the slope of the existing land as well. So you work from that. And also we have been discussing, Jen and I, coming up with a description of how to, how to, a formula, if you will, and a plan that going forward, how to do those points, whether it's every 20 feet around the perimeter, 10 feet out. You know, that's what we're kind of working on as well.
You can almost just do a diagram and hand it to them. Here's a, here's a way to calculate it.
That's what we're, that's what we're trying to come up with. So we can have a simple drawing and, and a method of doing it in the future so that it can, you know, could be part of the standard process.
Sure.
I'd like to make a comment on that. We do have scientific data points from LIDAR that we can use to estimate the mean pre-grade elevation. So there is data that's available that is reconciled. It is used in lots of different places and for the purpose that we are talking about. And I would like us to consider using that because you get many, many more points.
Yeah, and, and some of that we're requesting, did it be site sensitive and from an engineer? You know, to, to give us the onsite survey that I think is going to be needed.
Well, Jason Frederico can simply pull the data off of the web. It's generated by NOAA, so it exists. We have it and they've just improved its precision. This is for a later date in the discussion, but I think we should use scientific data if we have it, access to it. That's just my opinion. Other comments about, anything else exciting that's going on that we should all know about?
No, just a lot of it will come, you know, into effect as you guys go forward and we receive the applicant, application from the, you know, for example, the Harvard permit. You know, there's going to be some review that we'll do. We'll take the information that you've given us and you voted on to overlap it with the information that the, the builder or contractor is providing to us. Make sure they line up. Do our due diligence with the sewer and water departments, check on those other things, you know, prior to moving forward. But those are, you know, that's some of the permitting process that we will do normally anyway, especially when there's any type of decision on a project.
John, could you give us an update on Permitise? And get, I'd like to see some sentiment as to planning board members that would like to be trained. But first, people need to know what it is, what it can do, and then, and then how we're going to get trained.
Yeah, I think some of the training will probably take place in March, I think we decided, Jen. And then some of the availability, again, there's a portion of that gives you, you can look at the, look in Permitise without making changes to it. So there's two different programs. So that's the access that some of the members will be getting after the training. So again, you could go into a project address, see what inspections have been done, see what plans were submitted and, and review it in that manner.
Can you download the plans so that you can do measurements on them?
I don't believe you are able to download them. You might be able to print them, but a lot of the plans are to scale. So you'd have to print them out on a, a large, you know, two foot by, by three foot. So scaling off the printed measurements is a little more difficult. Oftentimes the measurements are on the plan anyway. But again, to, to kind of scale with a ruler and paper is a little more difficult.
People submit PDFs, right?
Yep, and oftentimes those are to, you know, to large scale, so.
If, if you go on Permitise, you can, you can see what was submitted for permit.
Yes.
And then you can make a copy, put it on your own hard drive and look at it?
Yeah, I'll have to see whether that, that information can travel outside of Permitise or not. I don't have the answer to that, but yes, I know we print them and, and could add to them and, and, you know, look at them too. So you guys at some point will be able to do that.
Can we get a sentiment as to who on the board would be interested in being trained? Okay, so we have a good team of folks who will learn to do that. That'll be.
Yeah, and I, I think I, I'm not sure what the, how the training is going to be or who they're going to open up to, whether it's just the, the chairs or the vice chairs or all the members. So that, that's, we'll have to get that decision going forward.
All right, great, thank you. Do, do, do any of the board members have additional questions for John? All right, so we can anticipate, oh, Eric, would you like to ask him a question?
Yeah, I've, I've been trying to, I guess the race, whatever. The raised hand thing doesn't seem to work well for me getting my, but anyway, John, Amy brings up a great point about the LIDAR, but I had no idea what LIDAR is. And I do remember John Carbonaro saying something about how LIDAR actually may not be the best methodology for depending upon the site. Amy has brought up a lot of good information about it. It seems to, seems to think it's the way to go. I don't know either way. Is it something that's used, you know, in the field for these sorts of things?
I don't believe it's used in the field by the engineers. Might be, I think it's, again, having not used it, but it's a general tool that is helpful at a, at a starting point. But I, I think we still need the physical engineer out in field to give us the, the true rate out, you know, and approve it.
And I always, yeah, I only raise the issue because I don't know one way or the other. Amy may be entirely correct and, and that is the best way. But I think that, you know, just remembering what John had said, I think the goal, the ultimate goal here is to get what's, what's best, what's the most accurate way and, and what's probably these guys do out in a day to day, in their day to day duties to trying to figure out what the heights are and what the industry standard is, so.
And again, the, the LIDAR could be used, you know, if the engineer chooses to use. But I think the data, wherever we get it from, needs to be certified by a site engineer.
So I will submit a dossier on LIDAR and its alternative, which, by the way, our second reviewer, Mr. Grady from down south from here actually has the tools to do that. So I will, I will provide you with the information. We can just decide, it's just for your information.
Yep.
It's, if it was a pain in the neck to do, then for sure, we wouldn't want to deal with it. But I, it's incumbent upon me, Eric, to provide you with the information that you need. So, and I will do that. Okay, other comments? So we're close to the witching hour for our next guest. Thank you, John, for coming. John is going to come when he can. My own request would be that we see him once a month so that we have a good idea of what's going on in town and, and what we can anticipate coming to us. If that seems overly taxing to John or if we think that's overtaxing to us, please let me know. I would appreciate that, but I find his visits informative.
Well, thank you all. Good luck tonight.
All right, so tonight, this is a very exciting night. It's the first joint meeting of the planning board and the master plan implementation committees, committee on the bylaw, bylaw, zoning bylaw working group. And at this discussion, I am going to turn it over to Ms. Katie Dugan, who is the chair of the master plan implementation committee. And, and we're going to have a discussion about a number of issues associated with what's going on around town. And this will be a procedure that we do more than once based on the number of committees that the master plan implementation committee is currently operating with. So thank you, Ms. Dugan, for coming. Please introduce your members and, and let's proceed.
Great, thank you for having us. So we're the zoning bylaw working group. And if you don't mind, since we've, we've done a joint meeting, I'm just going to quickly call to order the zoning bylaw working group meeting of February 3rd at 6:58 PM and just do a quick roll call. Present Katie Dugan.
Present Cass Meltestah.
We're here. Me, hello?
Hi, Tom.
President Paul Collieri. Peter, I think you are muted.
We see, we see Peter.
I'm here.
Excellent, thank you. And we have, Jen Orem is also on our working group along with John Howland and Jack Crichton, who I don't see up yet. I know he was out of town this week, so he may not be able to attend. So with that, I would ask that Lauren, maybe you share the presentation. Hopefully you guys got a copy of it. So if you wanted to print it out or have it up on a separate computer, you certainly can do that. And our hope tonight, if you don't mind advancing just to the table of contents, is to really start a conversation with the planning board. As Amy alluded to, this, today's update is the first of many between the planning board and the zoning bylaw working group. Our goal tonight is really to give you a survey and a sense of the work that we've accomplished in the last four months. And to not necessarily cover in deep detail, but at the end of, might really develop with you a work plan around how you would like to interact as we go forward in the short term around some of the warrant articles related to annual town meeting in May. And then longer term, as we think about working sessions between our two groups about some of the longer term initiatives that we're going to talk about that are larger projects and that will need to kind of peel back the layers of the onion slowly because it is a lot of material that we're going through. And obviously, we will need your input and support on a lot of these initiatives in order to bring them forward ultimately to annual town meeting in terms of, in terms of some of the bylaw changes. town meeting in terms, in terms of some of the bylaw changes. So with that, I'll have you go to the next page, which is just page three, page two, excuse me, which is the members of the committee. So when we met with you back in July, we had brought to the Planning Board from the Master Plan Implementation Committee, a series of initial recommendations. And as you remember, part of that was focusing on five particular priorities. Elm Street Corridor, zoning bylaw, working group, affordable housing, Elm Street Corridor, and then economic development. And as part of that, we recommended that there be a couple of working groups that were stood up to support some of these longer-term or immediate, more immediate priorities. And so we worked with the Board of Selectmen in August to set up a working group for Elm Street Corridor. We set up a working group for the Zoning Bylaw Working Group, and we also did one for the Cohasset Economic Task Force. The, the members of the working group are all equal, so we work as a team. And the way that we designed this was really to have input from, obviously, members of the Master Plan Implementation Committee, but bringing in Jack Crichton from the Select Board, Woody Chidick as representative from the ZBA, Paul and Tom from Planning Board have been really active members in our working group, Peter Pescatori from Open Space, and then we have support from Jen and John from the town side, and tying this into sort of the, the feet on the ground when it comes to what a zoning officer and building inspections need to do in terms of enforcement and in the field. So that's the working group itself. If you go to slide three, this is really the committee charge that we were given, or we worked on developing with the Select Board. And it really starts as its, as its footing in the master plan. And so the, the couple key aspects of what the committee charge are, are reviewing and rewriting the zoning bylaws. I think many of you know this, but the zoning bylaws were put in place in 1955 in Cohasset. There was a major update done in the mid 80s, and while there have been updates and changes and additions over the years, it really bylaws in about 30-plus years. And so reviewing and rewriting the bylaws is kind of the main focus. But as part of that, we recognized that one of the things that we needed to do in order to be successful, especially if we were going to undertake a broader look at the zoning bylaws, was to increase the inter-board coordination and the public transparency related to that. So that's part of the reason why we're doing an update with you guys today, and we'll be working with you a lot going forward. But we'll also plan on doing updates to the next bullet point, to the Select Board, ZBA. Woody, Woody and his board has invited us to come speak to them in March. And then as we get into some of the issues that we're trying to address, we do think that we're going to need some public forums and communication. And so one of the things that the Master Plan Implementation Committee did in December was go before the Board of Selectmen and request funding for fiscal '21, for a couple more, for the Elm Street Corridor Working Group, but also request funding for some of the other working groups, including this one, in order to have access to a discrete amount of resources if we want to run public forums going forward or do other kinds of communications and input with the community in a professional manner. So with that, I'll have you flip to slide four, and this is really, on slide four, the, kind of the meat of what the master plan says. So one of the things, and some of this will look familiar to you. The master plan has 20 goals and strategies that are directly related or indirectly related to zoning. And that was really the folk, that is the focus of what this working group is tackling. And so if you look at kind of the chapters, there's actually six master plan chapters that in various areas address zoning. And, and kind of the big themes that come out are, in the land use side, planning and investing in smart growth, which is really about making development decisions predictable, preserving open space, making sure there's a range of housing options, and encouraging community input, all things that we, we should strive for in our planning process. The other thing that comes up quite a bit in the master plan is this concept of, I'm sorry.
Katie, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt your flow, you're doing great.
Yeah.
But I have a question on the last slide. The first thing was about reviewing and rewriting the zoning bylaws.
Yeah.
And do you mean rewrite or is it revise? Because rewriting also might require, like your community outreach funding, rewriting of the zoning bylaws might, might require a consultant to, to take a look at it. And I don't know if you've kicked that around yet. Do you mean revise or do you mean rewrite?
I, I think in some cases, it's revising, in some cases, it is a rewrite. It sort of depends on, on the topic. I guess to sort of parse words.
Yeah, it's okay. It's okay if it's, if it's both, I just, the, the point is, you, you'll, we'll, we'll need professional consulting for rewriting, for sure. Revising, maybe, maybe not as much.
Yeah, and, and one of the things that we, that we did request was funding to work with council, specifically, as we do some of the more major portions of this. I mean, I think as a, as a working group, we kind of know our limitations. And so when we get into a subject area where we're unsure, we are reaching out to resources, whether it's the land use group at the MAPC, which is obviously a free resource, but in some cases, and we've had to do this already to make sure that we're on solid footing, we have required and gotten approved to access council.
That, that's great, and there may be some areas where there's, there's some planner out there who has particular expertise in the zoning language in addition to MAPC and council.
Yeah.
But as long as, if you've talked about trying to make sure that there are resources to get that expertise, then I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Yeah, no, we definitely, we definitely have talked about that, and, you know, like, like yourselves, we're a volunteer board, so there's only, you know, so much, so much time that we're all willing to dedicate to the, the pursuit of a perfect zoning bylaw, but that being said, we do advise that we need to bring in external resources.
Right, right, that's great, thank you.
And sometimes I can't see the flag, so I, I honestly, we run our zoning working group with the mics open. You know, so if people want to jump in and interrupt, I'm completely fine with that. I think that's a better way, sometimes to have a conversation if I don't see your hand up, if you don't mind. So going back to slide four, just kind of the goals and strategies that the master plan has kind of identified in terms of zoning are, as I was saying, there's a couple round land use, one being smart growth, the second being this concept of preserving Cohasset's community character, which is something that you're only going to get a sense or a flavor of by talking to the public and getting input from community forums on.
We need to change the slide.
We do need to, and I think, Lauren, if you're there, thank you. So the other land use goal that comes out quite a bit is the harbor area and the revitalization of the harbor that was envisioned landside in the harbor plan itself. And then the open space and rec plan talks about protecting open space and preserving access and preserving scenic beauty is one of the high-level goals. In the economic development chapter of the master plan, we talk quite a bit about attracting and retaining a diverse set of businesses, not necessarily in terms of explosive growth, but supporting the businesses we have, and where possible, diversifying it in ways that the community would see beneficial. And in particular, a lot of that is going to happen, at least in, hopefully in the near term, in that harbor-village connection. And then last but not least, in the housing chapter, and then subsequently in the housing production plan, there's quite a bit of talk about diversification of Cohasset's housing stock in, in terms of keeping that diversification. As most of us know, the growth in single-family dwellings has outpaced most other categories, and in some cases, categories like two-family homes have actually decreased substantially over the last decade. So keeping a, some level of diversity amongst Cohasset's housing stock is one of the important kind of zoning considerations that's laid out in the master plan. Underlying those kind of broad goals are a series of specific strategies that I won't go through in detail, but I just listed out at the bottom here to kind of give people a sense as to the specific things that are called out in the plan itself. And what we've done is sort of stepped back, having looked at the goals and strategies, and said, how do we go about organizing this in a way that allows us to tackle broader categories? And so if you actually flip to the next page, which is slide five, this is how we've kind of organized ourselves in terms of working group goals. And so we set out a series of kind of three, kind of timeframes. The first being six months, which is really, when we started this, was September of last of 2020, with looking forward to what could we accomplish and be successful at going into annual town meeting 2021. And those are the three that we listed at the time, use variance, large home review, which is something that we have all along said, is, that it said that it, it is an objective that we wanted the planning board, since you guys had already begun the discussion, to kind of lead, and then we would follow and assist as needed. And then we had put land alteration also in our six-months goals, because that conversation had already begun with the planning board in spring of 2020. In the 12-month goals, we put kind of three major initiatives. One related to harbor zoning, a second relating to housing options, which really ties back to that housing diversity goal in the master plan, and then a large bucket around residential zoning and really looking at our residential zoning in terms of uses, definitions, and table of area regulations. And then our longer-term bucket, and we, and we really haven't kind of put a timeframe on this, we, because we've, we have just honestly tackled the first two, but in the longer-term bucket, there's definitely a series of work that we would like to tackle around historic district and some of the strategies that come up in the, in the master plan related to our historical and our heritage. And then last but not least, is a whole bunch of cleanup work, whether it's sections of the zoning bylaws that maybe are not working as well as they should, or sections that maybe are too wordy or have, need to be relooked, need to be looked at in terms of their use going forward, such as some of the overlay districts. And so that is how we've set out our goals, the first bucket, the six-month, being ones that we're trying to move forward towards annual town meeting in, in May of this year. And then the next bucket, we're kind of trying to get our work started in earnest now, knowing that some of these are larger objectives, and that it's going to take community input, working with Planning Board and other permitting boards in order to be ready for annual town meeting 2022, if that's where we think we're going to be ready. So with that, I'll pause for a second. I don't know if there's any questions or comments.
So, so far, so good. I mean, your breakdown is excellent, and who formatted your presentation? Because it's really good. All right, it's really good, Katie.
No, you can't use her.
I, I bill, we can talk about my billable rate another time.
It's probably too high.
Exactly. Starbucks, and the praise of Woody Chidick. So at this point in the presentation, what we wanted to do, we've got four slides that we could spend a lot of time and, and deep dive on, or we can give you what we hope is kind of a sense of some of the projects. And so what we've, what we've done for all of the 12-month goals is we've identified a project lead. So Cassie Melatesta has stepped up and is the project lead on our residential zoning. Woody Chidick is our project lead on housing options. And Peter Pescatori is our project lead on harbor zoning. And I am project lead on some work in the other cleanup bucket around overlay districts. Tom Callahan has been taking a lead on large land alteration. And so we've got project leads that are then in charge of moving the, the kind of day-to-day or the week-to-week forward in terms of the pieces of work. So what I wanted to do is hand off to Cassie at this point on the next slide to give you a sense of what the work looks like that we're, we've got in process, just so you have a sense of the depth that we're going to and the rigor, and then talk a little bit about some of the themes that are coming up as we go through that work. None of this is ready for primetime yet, but we wanted to give you a sense today of kind of where we're headed, and if there was anything that was cause for concern or you were in agreement with, that's the kind of stuff that we wanted to probe a little bit at today. So I wanted to see if we could go through the next slides and just give you a sense of what that looks like. So with that, I'll have you flip to slide six, and, and Cassie, if you don't mind, I'm just giving a quick overview, that'd be great.
Sure, thanks, Katie, I appreciate that. So I've been running point on the residential zoning part of our, of our group. And with that, I've been having many calls with both Woody and Tom to discuss and then provide work product back to the larger group to receive feedback and comments, which I think has been a great process so far, and it's been a very open discussion with opportunities and challenges that arise with different personalities. But I think that, coming out of that, it's, it's been a lot of feedback, and I think as this continues to provide a working product in draft format and bringing it back to your group, it's, or your board, I think that we can come to a great place, that we can provide some work product that we can share with the, with the board at some point soon. So essentially, what I've been starting to task myself with is benchmarking and looking at various towns, such as neighboring towns like Hingham, Situate, Norwell, Duxbury, and really benchmarking and understanding how those zoning bylaws stack up to Cohasset. And as Katie had said, there's been some revisions to our zoning bylaws, but there's, there's a lot of work to do there and, and a lot of ways that we can make things better. So I've essentially put together a PowerPoint presentation that looks at each town and compares not only, you know, area of use regulations, but looks at their diagrams and other ways of examples that potentially we could apply back to Cohasset zoning bylaws. And obviously, there's some challenges that come with that, right? Because our land mass and size population is very different from the other towns, and when you're looking at coastline versus inner, inner-coast towns, there's, there's a lot of differences there. So it's not like we can replicate exactly, coming from other, other bylaws, but it's something just to think high level of and, and how we can be better, which I think is the most important, most important part there. So I've been taking a stab at that and providing information back to the group. We've also come up with the idea of proportional zoning to bring back to Cohasset and see if that's an idea in thought and theory that we could apply to our zoning bylaw. So specifically looking at, instead of residential districts per se, does proportional zoning based on the size of a lot make sense from a residential perspective? And I did reach out to Brooks and Durensis Legal Counsel, and I do have a preliminary memo, which has provided some feedback, and although throughout the Commonwealth, there are not many towns or many examples of where proportional zoning applies, it doesn't seem like it's illegal or, or not a bad thought and concept. So it's something to continue thinking about, and I, I did provide that memo, memo back to the working group last, at the last meeting, and we did have some kind of further conversation about it and more questions. So that final memo should be coming out where I can share with the larger team as, as far as input from legal counsel, which I think will be helpful. I'm sorry.
I, I, I'm wondering, is proportional zoning, is, is, is that like a, a new planner buzzword for having houses and structures that fit their lots or their neighborhoods and adjacent relationships of buildings? Or is it, is it something else? Can you just tell us a little bit about what, what that means?
In essence, it's, it's, it's so that we don't have an overpopulated, oversized town when it comes to housing and having massive overdevelopment. And so in concept, if you use something similar to an FAR measurement to define your An FAR measurement to define your max coverage ratio or or the size of your footprint compared to the size of your lot. Is that something that we should think of? And and within that memo that we did receive from council? You know, the the idea of staying in unity and consistency of which residential districts do. Provide you, you do lose a little bit of that uniformity inconsistency when you start applying FARs to to everyone's lots within one certain. Residential district. So that is one thing that we're thinking of. But I think that we still need to think through it a little bit. I think that we've. Put together something that's useful and helpful to consider, but it's it's still a work in progress.
Yeah, we've kicked around that a little bit with, you know, the difference between FAR and lot coverage, and it means different things. And. You know, our residential gross floor area doesn't include basements, even if they're walkout, which doesn't quite make any sense. And. You know, there's there's some things that that are okay, but don't work. So that looks good.
So we are continuing to work on that. You know, some other interesting things that we've seen throughout the town by town comparisons is is. Height diagrams that do kind of define plane grade and preconstruction grade. In a different way that Cohasset kind of thinks about it. So I know John and Jen just just spoke about that a little bit, but. I do think there's some lessons learned or things to think about based on how the other towns provide those illustrations. So I am going to have a separate meeting with Jen and John to. Look at those different diagrams, but there's some information that the other towns use to apply that help come in to gate the loopholes that we've seen in Cohasset. So I think that that'll be helpful as well. And just some general themes that, you know, kind of combing through the zoning bylaws for residential and Cohasset. A lot of things need to be refined and clarified. So for instance, on, you know, the housing types and housing housing definitions, although there's. I think there's eight discrete definitions of housing, but then in totality, there's about 24, and there seems to be some misalignment in in lack of consistency. So we're working on that. And Woody has basically taken a charge on really kind of combing through that and then providing work products that we can all kind of dissect. And think about how we think about housing definitions and housing types that I know he's going to talk about a little bit later, but. That's something that we're working on as far as just defining housing types and categorizing them a little bit more appropriately and clearly than the zoning bylaw. You know, other things, looking at area of use, area and use regulations, looking at heights and setbacks, coverage, frontiers and and massing, that's something that we're looking at. And then again, I know John and Jen were working on some things related to building and inspections. As far as those diagrams for height, that's also something that we're looking at as well.
Great.
Can I ask you a question? Do we, when we're thinking about these specific items? Are we discussing the reasons behind the thinking? That is, we wish it's it's essentially about either goal setting or value setting, which is we would like to see Cohasset be. Can we connect back to such things as how we would see land use?
I I think it's a really good question, Amy. And I think one thing that Katie's really good at is is having everyone take a step back and thinking about the holistic big picture of why we're doing what we're doing. So when it comes to either land alteration or looking at proportional zoning, it's not just looking at. A few key studies in town where people have oversized their lots. It's kind of taking a big step of of what's the better good for the town when it comes to aesthetics. And what we want the town to look like. So that that is something that that we're working on as well.
So you're utilizing concepts from aesthetics that that might be a framework that you're drawing upon.
In part, yes.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I wholeheartedly support that, given the landscape and what we have. So I think it's it's valuable to know that. That you're also working with that as a thought.
Yeah, I think one thing that we do try to avoid is looking at just a few precedents where people have taken advantage or or looked at loopholes throughout the zoning bylaw because. We shouldn't be applying blanket new zoning bylaws and revisions just based on a few precedents, right? So it's it's yes, looking at the big picture aesthetically. And the quality of what our town looks like.
Thank you.
I think that's it for my side, Katie, right?
Cassie, can I ask, when you're collecting all of this information? Is it going into a depository that that we could actually look at in some way, like Dropbox or something like that from the standpoint that? Often the planning board deals with issues in which definitions, as an example, become really important, but. One of us has to go chase it down if we don't have it already in one of our own personal drop boxes. Are you maintaining an archive?
That's that's a really good idea. I did start a Google Drive that Woody, Tom and I had put some work product. And we're kind of keeping notes throughout there in a working document, but I'm happy to set that up and and orient people with the. Most recent work product that we have and just noting that it's it's in draft format until we're able to until we're comfortable to provide a a final draft to you guys.
I would hesitate to use what we have in draft form in any binding decisions of yours or. Let's say the zoning boards, we would need town buy in. Some of this is pretty rough.
Yeah, I guess I guess what I'm referring to is you're collecting data from other places. And that kind of information can have meaning to us. For example. You know, what is town A or B doing? And if I don't want to add to your work, and I know that making archives is an effort. But I have been involved in community planning where they actually build. Archives so people can look at the materials. I'm not saying that's what we should do. I'm just saying as the planning board. There it might come to be that 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 some of the things you're collecting have value to us as we're deliberating.
Yeah, the only kind of collective document that I have is just a working product, I mean, a working PowerPoint that shows. I've linked every town that I've studied zoning bylaws, and then it's basically all my my notes and brain dump of. Copy and paste. But yeah, I I agree with you. And and I feel like anyone who has ADHD or is just kind of moving around. You know, for one thing, like I know that Duxbury's max coverage ratio, I I just threw in there because I saw that they said. That they use 15% as opposed to 20%. So I thought, okay, I know that we should discuss this at one point. So I've just thrown that in and 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 a lot of examples like that. So. Yeah, to Woody's point, it's not a document that's really in presentation format, but it's it's a brain dump of kind of working products and information that we can. Then provide a further working document to present to you guys.
Or maybe what we know is that you're the lead on that now. And so we would communicate with you for. Your reflections on content that might have relevance for what we're doing. That may be the easiest.
Yes, yeah, but I'm happy to share that PowerPoint as it stands today, just understanding that is a a draft. Format.
Thank you.
Amy, I have my hand up.
Katie's not here, so I guess I'll be Paul.
I was just gonna let everybody know. It seems like we lost Katie. I think she might have lost her internet or something. So she is not here at the moment.
Yeah, I noticed she had a little bit of a jiggle at the very beginning. Anybody like to take her place in the meantime, since you guys had a plan?
She's she's back now.
Oh, okay.
I'm back. Sorry, I was sitting in participants for a second. Apologize. We had. We've got four people hitting Zoom currently in the Dugan House on various things and and I got booted. So. So hopefully I've asked my husband to to get off and and maybe it'll stabilize. So. Amy, I think that what you were suggesting in terms of repository longer term is 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 a great idea. I think at this point. A lot of the stuff we've got are are really raw work product that we're trying to massage into something. So if there's something that. You know, your committee is interested in knowing more about, we may have researched it and we can forward that on, but dumping. You know, I I could show you my binder, but it's like, you know, four inches thick of information is probably not going to be helpful to you. Paul, I see that you have your hand up.
You're muted, Paul. Yep, sorry. No, I was just letting the board know here tonight that you had gotten cut out and you were about. That's an old hand, as they say.
It's an old hand. Okay, excellent. So sorry about that. The the pleasures of Zoom. So. I I think you got a sense from Cassie kind of the depth of what we're looking at and. And really some of the benchmarking and the inventories that we're trying to do. And then once we've got that work done, one of our kind of. Things that we've been trying to do is is create. Kind of memos that are initial observations. So Woody's been really good at that and and others of us have begun to emulate that. So once we've kind of got work product. That is at a point where we think it's worth sharing, we then try and summarize it in a set of initial observations that our working group discusses. And we use that as kind of our institutional memory in terms of where we're headed with some of these topics. But the residential zoning bucket is really going to have three stools to it. One is the area of regulations that Cassie has been benchmarking. A lot of work around housing definitions and then. A fair bit around uses to make sure that all three are in alignment as we go forward. So with that, I'll I'll have us, unless there's any other questions or comments on this, I'll have us move on to kind of the next bucket of work, which is housing options. And this is something that Woody had taken the lead on, and we had originally. Started this as a conversation about just the accessory dwelling unit by law. But then realized that 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 probably fit into a broader conversation. Around housing options and housing diversity. So we changed kind of the the overarching umbrella to call it housing options, but what we really tackled. As kind of the first thing in that bucket has been the accessory dwelling unit by law. And I'll have Woody speak a little bit to some of the work that he has done and kind of where we're headed from a theme perspective. Without kind of, you know, getting into the true nuts and bolts of of what some of the recommendations look like.
Okay, yeah, I I can speak particularly from the perspective of the zoning board. We've been plagued for years. With inconsistencies in our own bylaws. And Katie mentioned the three, if you will, pillars are legs to a stool. Which are, you know, are are uses defined. If so, where are they allowed, not allowed, require special relief or not? And thirdly, if they have anything to do with area dimensions, height or or coverage, et cetera. What are those requirements? Actually, very few of our housing definitions meet all three. Criteria. I'll just give you quick examples of a couple. Nowhere in the bylaws is there any definition of a hotel motel inn, et cetera. Technically, the Red Lion Inn, except for the fact it's grandfathered. It was not allowed, nor nor was a motel on the harbor. There's no definition of group homes, and we had one and and convalescent home. No definition, et cetera. So it it gave this is given the zoning board a a big problem trying to figure out. Is something allowed? And if it is allowed, where is it allowed? Another example would be the only mention of elderly housing in terms of where. Is in a in a somewhat obscure overlay district, section 16. And it's only allowed in the residential B and C districts in town. Which is, you know, kind of foolish. To put a nice word around it. So I've gone through and looked at other towns bylaws, but really tried to synthesize. All the references to housing, and there are about 40 housing types mentioned in our bylaws. I've now been able to bring them down to about 20. Because I don't know, it's just been patched and patched and patched. Another very quick example, we know that there is transient sort of lodging, if you will. We have definitions of a lodging unit as opposed to a lodging house. A boarding house versus a boarding establishment, a rooming house, a tourist house. These are all essentially the same. And so in that case, I think we can synthesize down and make it a little easier and not have to look at obscure. Subsections of of the bylaws to figure out what might be allowed and what might not be or what's in conflict. So. That that's progressed a lot. And I've done a lot of, if you will, benchmarking or comparative. Work with other towns, but we're not. We're not way out of out of sync there, but it's very been very difficult for the zoning board to. Know how to handle something that is nowhere defined. It's also been difficult to look at uses that are. Anomalous, for for example, in our harbor, it's okay to have farm animals. But you can't have a marine channel. Now, you know, I mean, on the surface, you'd say that's asinine. Of course it is. And don't ask me when I guess farm animals were 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 the thing in 1955. But we've really got to got to synthesize, streamline and make this all consistent. Cass's work and everybody else's work. It has got to sort of. Come together and and be consistent with a look to the future as opposed to a look to the past. So. That's what we're dealing with.
And on on housing options, Woody, under ADUs, you know, one of the things that. That you did a lot of was twofold, one, interviews and benchmarking of our South Shore neighbors, but also. Working and leveraging the resources at the MAPC, because as it turns out, they had done two studies recently. One for sort of some of the western suburbs, but also we're starting a similar conversation about small housing options. So. That has been part of the work that you've been also spearheading as it relates to housing and housing options.
Yeah, I think you can see it on the slide here. There have been two applications in 19 years. Under our accessory dwelling unit by law, one of those applications was simply to, if you will, legalize what already existed. If you didn't know any better, you'd say there are there are no mother-in-law, if you will, apartments in the town of Cohasset. You know, au contraire, there there are probably well more than 100 of those, but people have not been using the ADU by law because it's too. Restrictive for reasons I won't go into. So we're we're taking a look at how to. How other towns have handled this and the towns that have been successful in. Getting people to apply have have much more liberal approaches to. Conversion of a one of a one family house into. A primary dwelling and a mother-in-law apartment for for to use a euphemistic term. And that's been very helpful. MAPC has been very helpful. And I think if we can sort of facilitate some of these. Changes, we will see a way to so that people of moderate income, perhaps low income. Not talking affordable housing, but employees of the town, people who are teachers. People who are public safety employees can actually afford to live in Cohasset. Because they sure can't afford to buy a $2 million house. And we don't have any options between, you know, living the high life and. And I don't know what, you know, some sort of subsidized elderly housing, but. If you're employed and starting out in life with a young family or by yourself. Cohasset is essentially unaffordable. We all know that. So that's what we're. Trying to facilitate and and benchmarking with other towns to see how they handle this.
When you guys had talked, I think it was your last meeting about notices of intent. One of the things that I know you had had talked about previously was revising the ADU or the accessory dwelling by law. We had actually already started undertaking some of that work, and I guess we were coming to a conclusion that. Of making small changes at this point, it would be better to. Instead of rushing something to annual town meeting this year, look at a more major overhaul in order to be able to allow. The bylaw to be successful in the town of Cohasset. And to do that, I think we would rather take a little extra time and work with your board. And work and collaborate with the Affordable Housing Steering Committee. And trust to make sure that we've got buy in around the types of housing or or the diversification of housing that are more progressive ADU by law might create. And again. In the south, the towns that have been successful in doing this, they've they've been able to generate a a couple units. A year. This isn't a this isn't a a swamping of the Cohasset market with ADUs, but rather. Probably a modest increase in terms of moderate affordable housing in that category.
Well, I think Katie's bringing up one point, which is important to understand, I think we probably all do, and that is. You you need a menu of of options to deal with. One size or one. Device to enable low and moderate income people to take that as an example. To live in Cohasset isn't going to work for in certain circumstances. So I think we need two, three, four. Options within any one of these umbrellas.
Woody, I just wanted to throw in a a quick comment. I think that.
Woody, I just wanted to throw in a, a quick comment. I think that the direction that you're headed makes sense. I mean, I, I think I, I did some substantial work on the, the tweaks to the existing bylaw, but you know, the by right conversion for an internal unit, I, you know, that, that might work. There might need to be some control, however limited.
Oh, we're not opposed to that, Clark. We haven't had the, had the, uh, just discussion. Yeah.
And detached, I mean, I, I just think that crafting it so it works and that people aren't scared that they're going to have a bunch of undesirable housing units next to theirs is, is, is important to, to look at carefully. And I've always given the example where, you know, you, you build an in-law suite for your, for your, for your mother-in-law and it, she gets sick of it after six months and you've built this thing and she moved out and now you, you, you can't, without converting it into a separate dwelling unit, you can't have other people live there.
That's right. So you, your, your, your investment in that unit is, is frozen.
Yeah. Well, you know, we spent a hundred grand for, for, for the mother-in-law suite and then, and she just didn't like the colors.
Maybe she didn't like you.
They were too far away from her doctors and she moved out in six months.
Yeah, no, no, I, I agree. Now, these are the discussions we, your board and, and our working group will be having. I mean, there's no intention, you know, we have to go to you anyway, but we want your input.
Just one more, one more comment. I looked at the Living Little. I thought that was great. I, I have, I think Pocket Neighborhoods is a great concept for Cohasset if it's in these dense locations like the Village. That, that particular area or maybe even some of the other business locations. I, I'm not a big fan of these tiny houses that were shown in this Living Little. You know, like the house on wheels, like you could have just bought a airplane trailer that was cool, but you know, you made this like rustic thing that, cause you saved money on naughty pine and, I mean, I, 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 my, my heart goes out to the, these guys that are inventing the, they're inventing the, um, the, 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 the trailer that you can take camping and putting it and making it living, but I, I just don't think it has a, I don't think it, there's a place for it in our.
Well, you'll be happy to know that really hasn't surfaced.
About trailer housing and that's, that's probably good. I mean, there's a little diagram in the, in the living little thing. I just wanted to throw my two cents. Just, let's just stay away from trailer housing for now.
Woody, I'd like to bring up a case that you're familiar with, and that is a, a location on Atlantic Avenue in which a resident was proposing to build a pool house that when it was all said and done, it started out as a pool house and it ended up being a 5,000 square foot multi-space structure with bathrooms and a kitchen and a number of other accoutrements. And it was quite a problematic situation that the, the lot was large enough so they could deal with it and it sort of slipped by because it quote unquote, wasn't called a house. How do we deal with something like that? I mean, that was a good six weeks worth of angst on somebody's part writing notes to me. And I'm just wondering, how do we do a better job of really understanding what's happening and controlling things which people will just try to slip by?
Well, I think one way and, and I'll, I'll tip the hat to Tom on his, uh, on some of the land alteration components. But when you have these egregious examples, and we will not prevent everything from, you know, slick people from, from getting around the, the intention of the bylaw. But when you have these examples, you, you'll have to look and say, what was it about the bylaw or the lack of a bylaw that enabled something that seemed egregious or a house to be torn down that shouldn't have been, or a lot to be clear cut when it shouldn't have been? And kind of develop your, your bylaws to at least hit the, hit the majority of, of situations. But I mean, so, you know, every year there, there's, there's a new, something new that happens. I certainly seen in the zoning board and we say, oh my God, we never, ever thought of that. We, we won't be perfect, but I think we can be better at, at, at understanding the ways laws can be. Oh, you know.
It sort of goes to how we're living in 2020 versus how people were living in 1955. In 1955, a 2,000 square foot house was a big house. And if you had, you know, two and a half bathrooms, that was, that was a lot of bathrooms versus today's living where you know, 3,500 square feet or 5,000 square feet and five bathrooms and accessory structures are part of what people are envisioning for their lifestyle. So that's what we have to sort of think about as we look at things like definitions and uses going forward.
And is there anything, such, such a thing as, as proportional housing that, that's allowed? I mean, if you have a two acre lot somewhere and you can maybe build a, a large house and offend nobody and, and not have it, you know, bump right into the sidewalk. But if you're in a, a little lot, that same house certainly is an eyesore. So we're going to have to think about proportions in some fashion or another. Because our, our zoning districts don't exactly do it. I was looking at the RB district where you have 36,000 square feet. I think something like 60% of all, of all lots in the RB district are non-conforming. They're old. You know, so anyway, we just have to think about the fact there are 5,000 square foot lots there and there are two acre lots.
Eric has a question.
I, I think that's a great point that Catherine brings up. I think the, all, all parties need to be, understand where we are right now. And the fact of the matter is, is you have many areas of Cohasset, people are buying three, three to $5 million homes. And even a cheap home in Cohasset can be a million dollars. It's, the, the, I, I grew up in Newport Island and the neighborhood that I grew up in used to have 200 people run around during Halloween. Now it's a bunch of beach cottages, uh, because there was a bylaw in town that wouldn't allow for any in-law or accessory dwelling units. So all those people, as they aged, had to sell and move out where is, if there was a bylaw that allowed for something like that, they potentially could have had generational, you know, their kids come back in and had still had some living area. And, you know, maybe not over, um, you know, towards the, towards the water, but you know, especially where I live, I think it's pretty important that we take that into consideration that there have been generational families that are going to be priced out and have to leave. And any zoning bylaws that, you know, we put into place, you know, whether it's tiny houses or accessory dwellings should take into consideration that a, a community is made up of the people that live in it in, in the history that's there. And if we price everybody out because bylaws restrict the ability of people to stay here, then, then I, I don't think that's a fair thing. And I think it actually, it, it ruins the, the nature of the town in the long run because it just becomes a one generation town at a time. So I, I, I think that each district is much different and, and paying attention to, to what, you know, the people that live in that district and, and, and what those, uh, who those people are, and maybe, you know, maybe that would determine how we go about trying to get some kind of zoning that works to keep people here that have been here for 30, 40, 50 years. And, and really the only way I see it is, is to have those, you know, uh, accessory dwellings or in-law apartments or buildings or whatever they may be. So that they can have, you know, two or three generations worth of people, you know, not you know, living together. And, and really in many areas, that's the way it goes now.
I, I think to a person, the, the bylaw working group, Katie's group would agree with you.
Yeah.
95, I think a hundred percent.
Yeah. And I think we're, we're all, um, we're all of the mind that there are opportunities through zoning to create those, the housing variety that will allow for the, you know, allow, allow for diversity of residents to live in town. And our current ADU bylaw unfortunately is, is restrictive as many that were put in place at the same time, but there are models, maybe not tiny houses, but there are models that are out there in terms of more progressive ADU bylaws that, that get at some of the objectives. And a lot of it, there's one example in the MAPC research about not just the intergenerational of, of parents and children living together, but in a lot of cases, and this is true of Cohasset, there's, there's a fair number of 20-somethings that are living with their parents still for lots of different reasons. And so that ADU could also be used and has been used in other parts of Massachusetts to allow 20-somethings to live in, in a way that's, you know, comfortable for both mom and dad and the 20-something on the same property. So just a different spin on that multi-generational. So with that, I think I, I would love to move on to the next bucket, which is harbor zoning. Which is near and dear to your hearts. And this is one that we've really only begun to peel back the first layer of the onion. So we don't have any big observations at this point, but we have begun to kind of gather some of the, the information that we think we will need longer term to look at this. And so what I wanted to sort of lay out here is a couple of pieces of information that we've gathered. And some of this is work that Woody has done. Some of this is work that Tom Callahan has done and, and Peter is going to take the lead on in terms of pulling together more detailed thoughts. But we've started to pull together, looking at, you know, parcel by parcel in the harbor area, exactly how many lots are, can you define? And, and Woody did a nice job of summarizing by district, all of the lots that go and are, that are, go from Whitehead Road all the way through Otis Avenue. So we have a good picture of what that inventory looks like. And then in addition, Woody pulled together an inventory of the table of area regulations and the uses that cover that harbor district. And I'm, I'm sure you're aware, but I was surprised when I joined this working group to learn that there are seven zoning districts in that small area of town, plus the new Harbor Village Business Overlay District. And so it really is quite a, a bit of a crazy quilt of zoning as you literally go from Whitehead to Otis. And then last but not least, Tom and Woody have pulled together over the years, a number of observations, which we've kind of created as you were suggesting Amy repository. And with that, what Peter is trying to do is, is take that information, working with Jack and with, with Paul Cleary and start putting together kind of a strategy statement of what we think some of the major issues and that need to be addressed as it relates to harbor zoning. That is, is our first step. After we get kind of that strategy statement defined and a list of issues that we think need to be addressed as it relates to zoning around the harbor. We are planning on coordinating quite a bit with the harbor committee and the planning board in order to help tease out what some of that might look like. And with that, one of the things that Woody had already talked about is, is keeping an eye to the future, especially as it relates to the harbor. This is an area that I think we all know as Cohasset residents is likely to see quite a bit of turnover. And there are some big parcels that have the ability to flip in the next decade. And so we need to, we need to look at the harbor through the lens of the future, not of where it's been, which is unfortunately in uses like farm animals, not uses like a distillery, which may be what either is brought before the ZBA or, or not in the future. So with that, Peter, is there any, anything that you would add to what I just summarized there?
Yeah. Obviously the, the harbor and the village are the two gems of Cohasset. They're, they're the touchstone for everyone in the town. And we've got, we've just completed the master, master plan, the open space and recreation plan and the harbor plan. So all of these plans did extensive surveying of the community and gathered information about what the community would like to see happen with these properties, and especially, you know, the harbor over, over the, the near, over the, in the future. And, you know, we'll take, uh, you know, we'll digest that. I have a little subcommittee with, with Paul and, and Jack Grayton. And we'll, we'll try to come up with some recommendations about, based on what the community has said. And the reality of trying to preserve the access to the harbor for the community. So we'll, we, we just started out, this is a long-term goal. It's a 12 to 18 months effort to, to distill this into a recommendation of some sort. And so we'll be, we'll be going back and forth with the planning committee and the harbor committee as we, as we test theses is out and see where people are. So I look forward to really getting this, this moving. We, we only recently got together, so we're, we're at the beginning, but Woody and Tom and, and other folks in town have really done a great job in providing a lot of valuable documentation and, and details, data about the harbor and, and the specifics and we'll, we'll, we'll analyze that and try to come up with some, some recommendations that will, will serve the community.
That reminds me, I have to re-up for my harbor mooring. I've only been on the list for 25 years, but I have to re-up before like the end of March. Or I can't go to the bottom of the pile.
Yeah, I gave up a long time ago.
Tim's hand up. Paul, why don't you go?
Thank you, Katie.
Paul Cleary or Paul Grady?
Sorry, Paul Cleary. I can't see Paul Grady. Sorry. I should say it with Paul.
I, I just wanted to let members know if you can't like put it into perspective, the district that, you know, we're talking about the harbor zoning goes from Whitehead to Otis. It's, it's just a one mile stretch of road, really. And to have that cover seven districts plus the Harbor Village Business Overlay District seems like a lot. So I just wanted to put it into perspective.
You know, see if we can make a recommendation that makes sense to, to simplify that for everybody.
I see Paul Grady's hand up.
This is more of a question, I guess, for Peter, who I have met. Nice to meet you, Peter. How do you propose on poll, polling the town? I mean, I've seen some polls and some other projects that you know, they, they didn't knock on my door. So in other words, how do you most to poll the town? So everybody gets a clear, you get a clear indication of how everybody feels.
Well, it's difficult anytime you try to do it, but in both the, in all three cases, the master plan, the open space and rec plan, which I'm the chairman of the Open Space and Rec Committee and the harbor plan, there were open hearings for the public. Surveys done for all, each of these committees, each of these plans did extensive survey work. Now, I can tell you that the response from the town was not overwhelming in any of them. And it's, it's a difficult thing to get people to give you an honest opinion. So I don't know that we'll go and do additional hearings since all that work has been done already. And is newly, newly codified in these plans that were approved by the state and town and our, our effect, the guidelines and the envelope that we will be working with it.
No, I think it's admirable. I just would like to ensure that it's just not selective polling. That's all. To a degree, not an accusation or a speculation.
These were hearings, open hearings and, and present, you know, well advertised. MPAC managed presentations for, you know, for every resident of the town to come in and go to station by station and, and give their opinion. I went to every one of them. So.
Yeah, I think Paul, we recognize, Paul Grady, we recognize that all this work, each of these initiatives is going to take quite a bit of socialization and that happens, you know, at committee levels, but it also happens informally. And, and getting that communication out to the, out to the public because ultimately the bylaw changes have to be approved at annual town meeting. So you're going to have to have to, people are going to have to understand what they're voting on. And the worst thing you can do at annual town meeting is bring something that hasn't been well understood by the community forward. Cause you got the, the average man questions at annual town meeting can often crumble a conversation. So I, I, I take your point that there needs to be socialization. And I think we recognize that as a working group as we go through this process.
You know, thank you, Katie. The reason I'm saying that just brings to mind the project that we just went through, and we basically went through one of the most important projects in Cohasset in a Zoom environment.
Yeah.
Which is not conducive really to get a finger on the pulse of what, how everybody feels. We had a lot of input that was presented, but you don't get a real finger on the pulse of how everybody else is feeling. That's why I think something that's as important as the village.
Again, the, the public forums that were held for all three of these plans are recent. You know, that they've been done prior to COVID, and they were, they were held at the senior center and.
Here, I'm speaking to the, for the future, not what you did in the past. No, I appreciate that. And thank you for the information. I was just speaking going forward, that's all.
Yeah.
And as Katie says, you know, we, we will do public, public forums and, and socialization on all of this. You know, this, this has got to be a community effort all the way, to be approved by the community.
Um, Tom, Tim, Tim Davis, I know you've been waiting patiently.
Yeah, thank you, Katie. I just would like to say that I really appreciate the fact that the harbor is part of this conversation. As you know, we just, the town approved and the state approved the Cohasset Municipal Harbor Plan. In that plan, there are over 50 projects. They will be addressed over the course of the next 10 years. And there's an investment required between public, private and nonprofit organizations that will be between 50 and $100 million. Some of the critical issues that we have to deal with really are the issues related to, to climate change. Those of you who either live next to the waterfront or visit it from time to time, the storms we're having are, are creating flood conditions that eventually will, in my opinion, reach all the way to the village. If we don't invest that 50 to 100 million dollars, we're going to invest a lot more in restoring the damage from some of those storms. So that's a critical thing that we're going to, we're going to be addressing. The other thing that we're going to do is connect the harbor to the village. And we've, as Katie knows, part of the master plan implementation committee and the subcommittee is Elm Street. That is really a, an absolute wonderful connection between the harbor and the village. And it can attract not only residents, but visitors to come to Cohasset and, and visit both the, the village and the harbor. The Cohasset Harbor Inn project is an integral part of that and will create an opportunity for both visitors and residents to have a viewscape from Elm Street to the harbor. And it'll be part of the captain's walk that will go from, hopefully from the Oaks all the way to Government Island and have a park along the way, one or two parks along the way. So it's really going to be transformative. And I encourage all of you to be involved. To your, your comment, Paul, there are, there have been many public meetings, public hearings. We encourage more public involvement in that. The commercial fishermen are involved in it, although they, they sometimes are difficult to communicate with, as many of you know who have dealt with them. But they are critical to the whole infrastructure and the, and the community and around the harbor. So thank you all for being involved in that. And, you know, you will hear more from me in the, in the future on this issue.
So with that, I want to kind of wrap up the conversation because I know you guys have other, other agenda items that you need to get to, and I'm cognizant of time. So Lauren, if you don't mind bringing up the presentation, we'll try and get to the, the end of this so that we can kind of talk a little bit, which I think is an important conversation to have, about how we interact and work going forward. And hopefully, one day, we won't be talking all the time via Zoom, but rather sitting around a committee table again, having some of these conversations. So on slide nine, I'm not going to spend much time on this, but this is just an example of kind of the cleanup work that we alluded to in the beginning. We've gone and as one of the first areas that we wanted to explore for cleanup, we've started to take a look at our overlay districts. One of the things that I did recently was put together a comparison matrix that lays out all of our four overlay districts, plus the village business district, and kind of look at them holistically to try and understand not only the purpose of the overlay district, but then some of the key housing provisions that are embedded in each of these overlays. And then take a look at how, how utilized have they been? And some of the themes that you, you are probably not surprised is that there are, there are definitely redundancies between what's in the overlay districts bylaws and what's covered in the general zoning bylaws. And I think there's an opportunity to streamline and make sure that the overlay districts are focused and speaking just to what is special to the overlay versus repeating sections of the general bylaws, zoning bylaws, but also repeating and creating redundant procedures and, and processes that applicants need to go through. There's other examples where there's actually conflicting definitions between what's in an overlay and what's actually in the general zoning bylaws. So this is just an example of some of the cleanup that we, we hope to get to longer term. Part of the reason that we, I sort of turned over this stone first was we knew there, as we were starting to focus on a lot of the residential zoning and housing types, we needed to figure out what was in the overlays and what was in the general bylaws. And so that's kind of the reason we chose the overlay districts first as an area to pick at, because it was such, in some cases, redundancy or duplication of the, of the descriptions as it relates to housing and housing types. So that's just an example of the kind of cleanup work that we've got going. And, and like many things, we're trying to document it as we go, putting together tables that kind of lay it out, but also observations that we record that for our working group going forward. So the last slide that we've got tonight is really, you know, where, where are we currently in terms of work product? And as we had talked about, or you guys had talked about, and I chimed in at your last meeting, the zoning bylaw working group has submitted three notices of intent. We have one relative to the use variance, which is something that we'd like to bring forward to you in short order to talk about. We have, we're in the process of drafting a land alteration bylaw that builds on some of the work that others have done before. And we're taking, you know, look at the scope of that and some of the benchmarking that we've done relative to other communities have been successful in implementing that. And the only other thing that we've added to our list is, as we're going through the overlay districts, one of the things that we unearthed is the fact, and I think many people knew this, that there was a sunset provision put into the senior multi-residential overlay district, Articles 16.1, which sunsetted that upon the completion of Cook Estates. Now, at the time that the amendment was made to the bylaw in 2006, Cook Estates was still in the kind of pre-development phase. And there had been a thought at the time that that was going to be a development that actually utilized the senior multifamily residence overlay district. In the end, Cook Estates was actually developed under cluster, cluster development. And so the sunset provision itself was written tying the senior multifamily district to Cook. When Cook didn't become that type of overlay district, we're kind of left in this limbo. But the clear intention at the time was to sunset the senior multifamily district. And so we've asked the town clerk to look at this and talk to town council. And the recommendation at this point is that since the sunset provision is a little bit mangled, the, the sunset that was originally intended to happen when Cook Estates was completed couldn't happen. And so we actually need to take the action proactively to sunset the overlay district itself. And at this point, our recommendation is to fall through with that sunset of the senior multifamily residence overlay district. And in the future, look at potentially bringing it back in a different form. But the way it's written and was written back in 2001 really doesn't allow for the development of this kind of overlay anymore in the community. So what I wanted to end with tonight was really a conversation with the Planning Board about how is, how is it best to work with you going forward? I think we have three bylaws that we're looking forward to, looking to bring forward, land alteration, use variance, and this sunset provision this spring that we can bring you forward for discussion and public hearings. So that's one topic of conversation. The second topic of conversation is how do we work with you longer term on some of these bigger buckets that we've unpacked a little bit with you tonight, like residential zoning and harbor? So with the first, I'll sort of, those are the two questions I want to end with. On the first question around annual town meeting, I'd really like to get some guidance as how you would like us to work with you. Paul Grady, I see your hand up.
Hey, just a question in all this. Now, will we, and maybe for Mr. Chittick, are we going to be doing any rezoning? And, you know, this may be in the near future. The reason I'm asking, just a case comes to mind on Smith Place. Now, that was rezoned as, as zoned as part of the village business district, this prior to the railroad tracks going in. And I think everyone's aware that they tried to put 23 condominiums in there, and that didn't seem to work. Is there going to be any rezoning? I'm using that.
Not immediately. No, I think that's, that's intermediate to longer term, Paul, because it is so impactful and it's got so many components to it.
What, to reason? Or it's just to narrow the zone? That's the reason I'm asking. I'm using that case specific, but in other areas, when you're talking about.
Our concern is if, if we, if we leave too quickly, too soon, we may have to come back to town meeting a year hence, or something of that sort, you know, I, and say, well, we were mostly right, but we'd like to make some additional changes. And I think credibility could be in question. I think we'd like to do it comprehensively. I, I appreciate what happened to, to Smith Place or what still good, for that matter. But I think, I think we've got to be careful here.
Well, the reason I'm saying that, we, I was taking with Katie, so you talked about houses and things that, you know, how the, you know, universal housing structures in the general area. And getting something that has a dramatic effect. And again, I'm being case specific, but that could apply to anywhere. That could have a dramatic effect on the value of someone's home, their livelihood, you know, in their neighborhood.
Well, I think it's an excellent example, I mean, of, of something that really has to be looked. And you'd have to look at it today and say, is, is this, do we want to continue this kind of definition or, or zoning categorization into the future for that piece of property? I don't know. The answer, we haven't looked at it, honestly, because we're trying to.
So how would you propose someone looking at if they had an interest? This has been broad to me. And again, it has an effect on, and I'm asking, again.
Well, I think it'll be part of, of a general, and Katie's talking, I mean, Cassie's spoken to this quite a bit, to take a look at the overall zoning and regulations. Where do these work and where don't they? The kind of zoning we want, for instance, you know, in the older communities around town, the, the ones that are seventeen-somethings and early 1800s are very different than, you know, what used to be farms, cattle, you know, dairy farms in Cohasset. So I think we've got to look at all this, but I don't think we can kind of spot zone or tackle one particular problem without understanding the ramifications.
No, I don't disagree with you. But for instance, my house is 1880. And again, I.
It's one of the newer ones.
Yes, there you go, touche. You know, it's just something I think that bears some.
Yeah.
Prior to do to it, you know, popping up and kicking some other people in the head again. You know, that goes for the town, is looking at the zoning.
But Tom, you had your hand up.
I'm, I'm curious, Paul, what you're specifically talking about is somebody talking about wanting us to rezone Smith Place out of the village district?
I'm sorry?
Is somebody, is somebody asking you to rezone Smith Place out, out of the village district into something else?
No.
I mean, it's, it's the perfect place for multi-unit housing. That's why the village business, business district was designed for them.
Oh, that's right. You had a hand in that, didn't you, Tom?
Yeah. And, and by the way, that's the original part of town. Colonial times, it was mixed use. People lived and worked in the same buildings. Mixed use goes back three, two centuries. But I, I'm just curious as to what somebody wants us to do there. Because none of us are talking about rezoning anything at the moment.
That's why I asked the question, Tom. That's why the question wasn't directed at you, Tom. I was just speaking to Woody.
Okay, okay.
Hey, hey, I think there's a lot, that, that particular parcel at Two Smith Place, there's a lot of better things in kind of apartment building that was proposed. But the, I wanted to get back to Katie's question is how the, that the working group can work with the Planning Board for, in preparation for Springtown Meeting and, and the potential for three warrant articles. And, and, and I really think that getting a draft of the, of the language, and I know some of these exist already. Been working on land alteration for a while together as soon as possible and to meet informally with the Planning Board outside of the public hearing process. And then once we have the language that you think is reasonable, then we schedule a public hearing and then, and review it in preparation and in conformance with requirements for the warrant.
Okay. So I guess when you say meet informally, you're saying, you're, you're suggesting that we have a.
An informal meeting that's not a, not a necessarily a, a noticed public hearing on the bylaw to discuss it informally ahead of the official.
So it's an agenda, it's an agenda item, but it's pre-opening of a public hearing?
That's right, that's right.
Where the language, okay. I, I get, I, I understand that as an important step. So before you open, you have a draft of the language, if you have a, if you have a, you have a agenda meeting on it, the language is still open for discussion. And then you open, and then once you've got that finalized, and then you open the public hearing.
And that's important because anticipating town meeting, it's, the, the dates sneak up very quickly. I don't know if Lauren or Jen knows when the warrant closes. We, and we, we just don't want to have like language that we change on the floor of town meeting or makes it seem like we really haven't thought through everything. And that's why doing an informal ahead with good language can, I think, help.
Okay. I, I appreciate that. And we do have, we do have the draft calendar that's already up. I don't, I don't have it on me right now, but we, we do, we know that May 24 sneaks up on us quite quickly, so.
It always does. It always does.
But that was part of the, part of the reason for getting in front of you today was to have that, that input in that conversation so that you guys, A, know what's coming from us, and B, we understand what your expectations are relative to how this is going to work. And, and what we're hoping that we're bringing forward for Springtown Meeting is, is almost a chance for us to, you know, try that relationship in terms of how we, how we work through some of the issues in the draft language, so that as we get into the meatier topics that we're talking about in terms of broader residential zoning changes or broader harbor change, zoning changes, we've got a little bit of a cadence and a rhythm going between our two groups.
That makes good sense. The low-hanging fruit, as it's called.
Yes. So in terms of the longer term, I think this is really kind of a question, Amy, I'm sorry, you had a, you had a point.
I just wanted to know if in your calendaring, if you have left time to get various boards onboard for changes that you might be proposing at town meeting?
So again, what we're, what we're bringing forward this spring are, is, is sort of the easy, easier stuff. So we will have to go through a public hearing with the public hearing process with the Planning Board. And then we will also need to get a vote from the Advisory Committee. And we would also, in some cases, and Woody has already invited the zoning bylaw working group to present to his committee, we'll certainly use ZBA as a sounding board. But in terms of the, in terms of the formal stops that we have to make, it's a formal stop and work with your committee, a formal stop to the Advisory Committee, and then obviously the Board of Selectmen ultimately votes, A, to get it on the warrant, and B, they'll have a vote themselves on the warrant article.
It's, it's a lot of work going to all these guys. I've done it. And it, it, but you just have to stay on the dates.
Yep. Appreciate that. In terms of the longer term question, I'm sorry, Cassie, you've had something? Yep. Appreciate that. In terms of the longer term question, I'm sorry, Cassie, you've had something?
I was just going to circle back on, um, Amy's comment or request of, Amy, do you want us to create a shared drive? I mean.
Uh, I, I think what I learned from our, our interaction is that, um, that it's incumbent upon us to stay on top of. The broad outlines of what you're working on so that should an issue come up that is related to something that we plan to work on. And we know that you have been working on it, that we come to you first for information to see if you've collected anything that could be useful to us. So rather than having you need to, um, do an additional, um, task of creating an archive. I think it's just more that we, we need to stay on top of what you're up to so that it allows us to, to be able to act. To benefit from your, your work.
I would, I would, I would say that instead of us pushing all the information to you, I'd rather have you guys pull the information that we might have from us. You know, uh, from our repository as you need it, because I think you, you, you were going to quickly lose interest in some of the details. We've wandered into, but God bless. If you want to, if you want to.
Four inch binder, I'm looking for that one.
Yeah, no, I'll, I'll, I'll drop you a copy for this weekend.
I got Mike Dix when he retired and I have, it's a doorstop now.
Yes, exactly. Um, so on the question of kind of longer term, um. You guys are just getting through your, your Cohasset Harbor Inn, um, public hearings and, um, have maybe a bit more freedom on your agendas. But longer term, I guess I would throw the question out and you don't have to answer it tonight, but as a planning board. You know that we're working on a bigger top, we're working on a bigger topic around residential zoning. You know that we're beginning to do a bigger topic as it relates to, um, harbor zoning. And we've got a, a, a third bigger topic going around housing options. And so we'll know kind of, I, I would say that maybe housing options in ADU might be one of the first ones that ready for primetime. But I would like you guys to give us some direction on, on how you want us to feed you information on some of these larger topics. Because we're not, the, the size of some of these, we're not going to be able to just come to you, um, spring of twenty twenty-two. And explain what we've been doing for the last year and get your input in by. And we're going to need to chunk this down a little bit and feed you. Conclusions or feed you information as we go in order to, A, be a good sanity check for us. But B, also kind of bring you along in our thought process so that we're not kind of downloading a year's worth of work onto you. Tom?
Well, there's, there's two of us on the zoning working group.
Yes.
We should be, Paul and I should be in a position to be able to report that stuff. And I suggest maybe on our board, we just make it a regular agenda item if there's any update that Paul and I need to report. And then if we need a meeting like this, a joint meeting of the full two boards, we can do that on a situational basis. But, um, the whole point of Paul and I being liaisons is to be the source to go between.
And that's typically what we do, Tom, is we go around at a, at an interval to, to ask. But make sure that we are reminded we do that.
Yeah, I guess if we just put it on the agenda as an automatic thing and we, Paul and I will either have something to report or we won't. Take either five minutes or ten minutes, so, yeah.
That's a good point. I mean, we can, uh, the part of the reason, as you said, of the design was for that to happen. It just sometimes if, if it, if it's the end of a long meeting, it's not always the most opportune time to, to give the download. So I think your point, Tom, of having it programmed in to, um, how you guys operate as a board to, to make sure that you're, you're getting the regular updates. Is going to be helpful. Um, Clark, you had something to?
Yeah, I, I think about the housing, uh, thing that, that is probably the more prescient, uh, major. To, um, or, or ready to, for zoning changes sooner. Uh, and I, I guess I'd recommend that we have a working session that's like this one that, that has been at. And, uh, where we can do a dive on, on the housing issue. So, so, I mean, I think the best, the best way to manage this kind of problem solving is both bottom up and, uh, top down. And, um, and it makes sense to get as many perspectives, um, as possible. To, um, look at crap, the zoning that would create the housing diversity that is goal. I mean, I think every, in every quarter, I mean, I think after town meeting, we could maybe do one of these sessions in the summer.
Yep. Okay. That makes sense. And I, I think a working session on housing options and specifically ADUs. Probably the, the one that we would, at least in my mind, um, be most ready to tackle, um, with you guys in whatever, June. If we were going to do it, um, after annual town meeting. Okay.
And then you have a model for working together that you can then use sort of for, for other things moving forward.
Yeah.
And I think that's great. Yep.
Tom?
Back, back to your slide, there was a fourth by law, which was large home review.
Yes.
And I had told our zoning working group that it was, the planning board was going to get together and discuss that. And I'm, that's my question for the planning board tonight is, you know, we have finally set up a meeting like this where we don't have any graphics to be on. Are we discussing that?
We're not scheduled, we're not scheduled to discuss it tonight, but we are, and, and we, we didn't have that scheduled for this evening. Because we had the first three items, which Katie wanted to make sure we had enough time to do without having to go until ten o'clock at night. But, but before we can do much on the large house review, we still need to have, um, information. Some of which John is developing and some of which is Lauren is developing. So, um, as soon as we can get past some of the bureaucratic ru- responsibilities that we have. In terms of, uh, A and Rs, et cetera, we're going to try to weave that in. It just hasn't been a timely situation.
Is the, is the idea of making any change for this town meeting off the table?
No, there's.
I don't want to spend any more energy gathering materials about it if it is not going to go forward this spring.
There is no plan to take a large house review revision for this spring.
And Lauren, we don't have a placeholder for it on the, on the draft warrant, right? There's no placeholder for large home review.
Don't believe that was one of the ones that was agreed upon. I went before the planning board a couple of weeks ago and we discussed which ones to submit. So, uh, I just have to double check.
Well, there, there's your answer.
I thought we did discuss the large home review, Clark.
I mean, we've been discussing this for the last three months and.
But it's not, if it's not on the draft warrant, if we don't have a placeholder for it, then forget it.
If you decided that, that I, I did everything that you had said that night. I just, I, this has been a really long week and I wasn't prepared to answer that question tonight. So I will just double check on which, but I did, it was immediately the day after we had our meeting that I submitted to the town manager's office, the ones that you had agreed upon. So let me just double check, please.
Yeah, could you, Lauren? Because that's when we came up, that last one with Egan, and, um, that's was kind of an important one. Was, uh, Tom was going to work on that. So I got to stand with Tom on that.
Yeah, and I mean, I thought, I mean, we, we have been struggling to find an open night to meet. To discuss things without permits and I honest to God thought this was going to be discussed tonight.
Wasn't on the schedule though. I mean.
We discussed things for three months and it doesn't get on the schedule. I don't know what else I'd have to do as vice chair and member of this board to get something.
Tom, just as an example, we thought we were going to be able to close on the, the harbor project tonight. And we weren't able to, didn't anticipate having the number of hearings necessarily that we ended up having. It's not that we're trying to postpone it, but we are also, we have a lot of other business that we have to deal with.
I, I'm aware of that. And I, I, I believe that we are going to have to make it a pattern. To have a third meeting in a month like tonight's, to be able to deal with that from time to time. I just thought tonight being the first opportunity to do it in a long time, we were going to discuss it. That's fine if we're not, but, you know. But it's, our, our next li- large home review project will be, will point out more problems. So we'll, we'll just deal with it as, as it comes.
Jen?
Actually, I think Lauren has something to say and I just, uh, yeah, Lauren.
All right. I just wanted to follow up on our last discussion. I pulled it up and these are the six articles that I submitted after the January thirteenth meeting. Based on what the board decided. Large House Review is one of them. And then it was the, the FEMA flood plain update, which is mandated as we had actually brought to town meeting last year, but then it was rescinded. So that's just a new update of that. And then the other four are the items that were brought forward, but then tabled when COVID impacted town meeting. Which are the Whitney Spur, the Whitney Spur rail trail zoning request, the solar overlay amendment update. Table of use amendments relative to special permits in the village business district and the fast food definition amendment. Those are the four that were carryover from last time. Large House Review was added. And then the FEMA is just again, an update that's mandated, uh, to stay in the national flood insurance program. So those were the six that I submitted. That's different than the ones that the zoning bylaw working group had submitted.
So just to clarify, the large home review is on?
Yes.
Yeah, it's got a placeholder, but until we ha- we, our problem is we haven't had a chance to collect information. And synthesize it to actually know more than we did, other than we have problems with the actual, uh, large house review. That we currently have, right? We, and, and so we, we haven't had the chance to have the discussion about what would we do? How would we fix it? What do we think works, doesn't work? What, what has happened in the past? It, it's a complete, it's completely conceivable that what happened in the past is an anomaly associated with the previous building inspector. We don't know. I mean, I'm open for you to recommend how we would approach this in the absence of being able to study it enough to know what it is that we would want to do.
I have provided, I have provided the two alternatives, choices that we had, well, three alternatives. Get rid of it, keep it, or change it to a special permit process. I believe I recently passed around materials we gathered in two thousand seventeen. Thinking of amending it, but which were actual decisions in Wellesley, since they have the identical bylaw we do. We borrow theirs and, you know, were decisions of how the Wellesley board dealt with it. I, I don't know what other information we need to gather at this point. We just need to make a decision. Whether, whether we like the way it's working or it doesn't. I, I have my own personal view about that, having been at its infancy in two thousand and five. But I, I, I don't know why we keep putting it off. That's all, I guess. I guess frustrated with putting it off.
Eric, and then I'll come.
I, I would just say, it, this is a, a little bit of a topic that I'm going to be a little sensitive on. I, I agree with Tom that we do need to, uh, amend things and, and work through things. But I will be very candid that I'm not going to be in favor of any large home review absent some, um, uh, actual analysis. Uh, and, and, and factual analysis of, you know, what is a large home here in Cohasset? And what, um, wh- wh- what, what that constitutes depending upon the district that you live in. And I'm also not going to be in favor of just adopting and, uh, uh, or, or following, uh, perhaps, you know, what another town has. Uh, I'm just not going to do it. Uh, I'm going to be candid about it. I, 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 I want to see some data. Uh, what, what's going on today in today's Cohasset, um, before I make the same mistake as we did last time. And just arbitrarily throw darts at a board. Um, I think the language can be worked through. I think that, uh, in order for the large home review to be effective without just, you know, having the same problem two years from now. We've got to take, had a look at, you know, what is a large home and what is a large home where in Cohasset? And then also, you know, what sort of restrictions are we going to want to, uh, be making on people's rights to build on, on their properties? Um, and, you know, what is the legality even of us to be doing such, such things? So, um, I, those, those are just the concerns that I have. Um, I'm, I'm all for, um, I, I think it's one of the things that definitely need, need to be reviewed. And I, and I think that, uh, you know, that the homework that's been done already has been great, but, uh, I don't think that there's been a dive into the numbers of it all. So, uh, or the, or the, or the analysis into, you know, what is a large home now in Cohasset? So, um, you know, that, that's something that I definitely, before I put my stamp on anything, I'm definitely going to, uh, be keeping a close eye on.
That, that's a good point. Does anybody know, does the assessor's database have a ready, ready ability to tell us? What the average square footage of a house.
Somebody has to analyze the data. That is, we, if we had, if, if we had a staff member, I did it the last time.
No, my question is, does the data exist? Push a button and give us data.
Yes. So the, so the, the assessor's database has, has the square footage of the house. It may not, it may not include basement in the way that you want it to. But in terms of first and second floor, it's, it's there.
Yeah, okay. That's, as, as long as we can, I, I think Eric's point is well taken that we should know what the average sizes of houses are. In our different districts. And if that's information that's readily available, then let's get it.
Yeah. So the, so the database will give you, so the assessor's database will give you the, the district. The land use code, it will give you, um, lots of details about the house, but it'll give you square footage. It'll give you lot size. Um, so you could come up with some metrics out of that that might be helpful.
But it'll be on one of our agendas coming up.
Yeah, and, and if, I, I would recommend that, at, if we put it on our, I don't know what we have scheduled for next week. But if we put it on our agenda, if we could formulate the set of questions that we want answers to. Then we can go to Chris and ask for the resources to have the analysis done. It's not a trivial analysis. It is going to take hours of someone's time.
It is, yeah.
Do this, and there's a lot of, a lot of variability, a lot of variables in it that have to be dealt with. There, you know, we've never even talked about, uh, houses that have expanded from what they were to much larger than the, you know. Just, just people expanding their houses. We have never talked about what to do with that as an example. But that's a big chunk of the large house, house property is people actually adding to their homes. So we have more than just new builds we have to think about. We have also existing builds that have been enlarged.
And, and, and not to interrupt Amy, but I, I'd like for maybe council to give an opinion on whether or not, if we put teeth into this and make it an enforcement bylaw as well. Is that legal? You know, can we start having, uh, i- i- do we have the right to en- enforce what sort of, um, you know. Uh, plantings go in and screening go in and lighting goes into a person's house. I don't, you know, what is the legality of that? That, that's a concern I would have as well because, you know, my opinion would be, you know, perhaps we don't. I mean, perhaps you don't have the right to tell someone that, that, that they have to put up our devices a, 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 along the border of their property to screen themselves from their neighbor's property. So, um, before, you know, moving forward on, 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 on making a decision on, on revising what's already in place. Those are some of the answers that I think that we should have.
And that's separate data from our own data, right? That's.
Well, that's legal. That's a legal question more than anything else. Not really data, right?
Looking at other places and asking what has been able to, to operate within the context of the legal system.
You know, I mean, for example, the switch to a special permit process would raise some legal issues. And I think to effectively do that, we would have to create. An as of right limit to the size of a house, that's X. And then say anything that's over X would have to be a special permit. I don't know that we could just, what we have today, thirty-five hundred square foot building, we could just simply slap a special permit on it. But what we have is essentially residential site plan review, which I think is illegal, but. But I, I don't.
So, so as soon as we can work this in our schedule.
Yeah.
We will allocate, and, and again, we're going to do the best we can. We can do it in pieces. We can do it in a larger chunk. Putting in an extra meeting so that we have time to.
I, I don't think we'll make it for, I don't think we'll make it for the Springtown meeting at this point, that degree of information that we, we gather. I mean, we can try, but.
Not if we want to have it based on data. We, because we have to have somebody analyze the data. We have to have somebody collect the data. I have some of it. I know that Katie, Katie has some of it. Tom has it. But it's not, it's not coordinated in any fashion that can be used to make a judgment on. This is not a trivial problem. Uh, Paul Cleary?
What exactly is the data that you're looking?
What exactly is the data that you're looking for? Like most recent newly constructed buildings or overall across the town from its inception? Or what exactly is it that we're looking for?
The last time we did an analysis, it was from the moment that the large house review was originally created until 2018.
So I, I could easily put that data together for the board if you would like me to.
So why don't we take what you're saying, which is a great offer? Let's put this on our agenda. It sounds like we're getting together next week. Let's make a list of the things that we have and the list of the things that we don't have, what we want information to tell us. And then that will be a way we can direct you, if you're willing to do that, to find, to acquire the data that's necessary to do the analysis. I can give you what we did. But there are issues associated with doing it in terms of matching the zoning that applies in individual places versus the housing that is on those sites.
I'd be happy to help.
Great.
Before even the data, the fundamental question that I see with this bylaw is, what do we want it to do? You know, who, what we regulate with the data, you know, what's the size of houses? But what do we want this bylaw to do? And my fundamental problem with it, since it's its inception, is that it either is not giving us the ability to say no, or it's not being exercised by ever saying no. And without the ability of a permitting board to say no, there's no leverage, there's no, nothing. People will do whatever they want and can do whatever they want. So I want everybody to think fundamentally, what do you want to do about houses that exceed a certain size? The principle behind it is we don't want mansionization. And that was a buzzword in the middle of 2000s. And that's exactly what this was intended to address. But, okay, if you can't say no, then what leverage do you have over people to stop them doing what you are trying to stop? And, you know, again, and the same question, by the way, for me goes with commercial site plan review. Site plan review is a very weak tool to say yes, to say no with. It's a weak thing to go to court over. But we either need a mechanism to say no, or if we already have it, we need to start exercising use of the word no, depending on what the objective is we have. And I think it's time after 15 years of this thing, it was addressed to mid 2000s of mansionization. What is the objective, the continued objective of this bylaw?
And that's where I was going with it, Tom. That's where I was going with it too. And Amy, I think the data is one thing, but what's the, where are the rights here? These are people's homes. And what are our rights? The current bylaw as amended, it puts a lot of review guidelines in place. We review a lot of aspects of a, of a large home that's being built. And if we get teeth into that and say, no, we don't like color of the shingles that you put up, it doesn't go with the neighborhood, or, you know, are we allowed to enforce that or not? I, I think that's the question I'd want answered, because I, it's a bit ambiguous to me. I think it's different than a, a commercial property or a special permit. And, and are we authorized, you know, to, to make those decisions on someone, with regard to someone's personal property and what they're gonna build there?
Clark?
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't think it makes sense to endlessly speculate on this thing right now. I think.
All I'm asking for is some sort of, yeah.
Should read the bylaw in anticipation of another meeting of the planning board. And, and second, I think we should thank Katie and the master plan implementation committee for, for meeting with us and doing this great introduction.
Yeah, they did a great job.
And then, and finish up our meeting.
Well, thank you guys for inviting us. And what you're struggling with right here in terms of like the problem statement or the policy statement is a little bit of what we tackle when we talk about residential zoning or harbor zoning. So I appreciate the conversation you're trying to have related to large home review. But it is clearly defining that problem statement, that policy statement first. And then from there, flowing into what the by. I appreciate what you're wrestling with. But we, we will, I, I think tonight was a good chance for us to all meet. You didn't know some of our members, you, some of us, you've seen in different capacities. So I appreciate that. I've got a pretty clear vision of what you want in terms of a calendar for annual town meeting. And, and I'll work with the working group and with Lauren to make sure that we get back to you draft language. We have an informal meeting to first talk about that draft language, and then we open a public hearing process. So we'll get that done. And then in terms of longer term, I think Tom's recommendation about billing and regular updates so that you guys are kind of kept up to speed will be helpful. And then we will plan a joint meeting to talk about housing options and ADUs as kind of a second quarter objective, June, July timeframe, to open up and unpack that topic a little bit more with you. But I think working sessions are probably gonna be the best way to do that. So in conclusion, thank you for your time tonight. I appreciate that you guys took a meeting to talk to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming to see us.
All right.
It's really helpful.
Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Good night, all.
Bye, Katie. By law. Bye, guys.
We have a little bit more business to do.
Well, Amy, before we move on, because I think I got, can I request formally, I guess, because I've really been, I haven't got an answer on it. Can I request that town council give us some sort of opinion on what sort of powers we have with the large home review? With regards to?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I can tell you, I can tell you now.
Wait, no. Can we just go through our business?
Lauren, let me just ask, Lauren, for our next meeting, do we have time to start a conversation around large house review?
Oh, I will tell you what the agenda items are now, and I'll let you answer that question. You know, I think it depends on how fast we can move through our agenda. We have two new large home reviews scheduled for the first portion of the agenda. We have three A and R applications.
How many?
Three. And that's February 10th. On February 24th, we have, One Pleasant Street will be starting. The, it's like a roller coaster of, we just finished this project and I thought we'd have a break. And then we got maybe six or seven applications done within, you know, a two, three weeks time span. So we have One Pleasant Street starting. It's a village business district special part, no, special permit and site plan review. And then we also just received 147 South Main, which is the building that burned down, down by the church heading towards Situate on South Main.
The gas station.
Yes. Yes, that, that will also be a special permit and site plan combination. The special permit for that goes to the zoning board, right, Jen?
Right, yeah, we have a special permit.
Lauren, what are the frequency of our, of our meetings?
We meet typically every, twice a month. So it's, it's, for most of the months, it's the second and fourth Wednesday. And then I think because the last three months, there's holidays, so it's the first and third.
Jen, is the building that burnt down coming as a commercial or a residential?
It's going to, it's a multi-use. It would be a business on the first floor and residential on the third, on the second. And that's what it was before. The, the gas station actually had apartments behind it, so two or three homes were lost when it was burned as well. So while we're on this topic, just because we have everybody here, we need to assign, and I've already talked to John Hallen about this today, because we need to, Lauren and I were inundated with paper. I feel so bad for the forests today with multiple applications. And not only what you already have on your plate, but we need to get these out to engineers. We, as you know, we have Weston and Sampson and as well as Amory. In the effort of how we're going to be changing things, all working together. Both zoning and the planning board are hearing the 147 South Main Street. So we were going, I was going to send everything to Amory so they could do all the review at one time, so it's streamlined. And both, both boards will get both reports. And that way, it's a good cross pollination of information. So that's what I was gonna recommend to the board, and John Hallen agreed today. I just wanted to update you on that. We also have to do, get an engineer on One Pleasant Street as well.
So what are the A and Rs?
They are the, you know, the Cohasset Heights, 34 Crocker Lane, up the, actually where the solar site that came before us. It's that parcel. It is, they're looking to reconfigure some of the lot lines there. And it is one additional lot that they'll be creating that would be buildable in the proposal. And then we have 90 Whitehead Road, which is, they're not creating any new buildable lots. It's just a line change. And then, what's the last address? Seven, I wanna say 70, 76 or 75 Border Street. And that, again, is a lot line change. They're not proposing a new buildable lot.
So in general, the A and Rs are not gonna be really difficult, probably?
No, I wouldn't.
Okay, and the large house reviews are where?
The, they're the four, well, they were advertised as four Windy Hill and 630 Jerusalem Road. But I actually heard from the fire department today. And he is, for fire safety reasons and the access, wants that 630 Jerusalem Road to actually be a Windy Hill address. So he's working with the assessors department now to determine what the address will be. So it, it's lot 32 of Windy Hill Road.
Okay, and has Matt Shannon paid his taxes?
So he has not, but here is what, where I left off today. I had called into the treasurer as well as the assessors to determine, because I, from the records that I have, it, their application and, and the material that's referenced should, would show that Ames Capital Partners is the owner. So I just want to verify that with our, you know, with our assessor's office. I hadn't had a chance to connect back with her, but I did leave her a message today about this. So, you know, if it, if it is still Matt Shannon, then we would not start the hearing. And, you know, we couldn't move forward because he's not in good standing with the treasurer's office. But as I looked and was preliminarily told today that Ames Capital Partners doesn't have any issues with the treasurer's office, so then we would proceed. So I'm just waiting to finalize that. I don't know if Jen had heard anything else since I checked. Okay, yeah, so we'll, we're, I'll finalize this and get, you know, tomorrow. That's that. And then tomorrow, I will be sending you a packet of all of this stuff for Wednesday. I typically like to get it a week in advance, but when we have double meetings, I don't want to overwhelm you with all this material if it's not for tonight. So I'll give it to you tomorrow morning.
Okay, so the possibility would be that the A and Rs are gonna be easy. So they could be done in maybe 45 minutes, each one taking 15 minutes or so. I know that's really being, hopeful of that. I think the Matt Shan, I think the properties on Windy Hill are gonna be complicated. And the conversation is gonna go on for a while, because there's a lot that has to happen on those sites. So from the standpoint of what would we want to take up first in terms of the large house review? So Eric is asking for a legal opinion about whether or not a, a large house review mechanism is legal. Well, it's used in the state, so I, I don't know what to say. But we, why don't we start out with asking Charis to look at that and give us a brief on what, what the, the, the the record is on large house reviews in different locations? Because she's already collected a significant amount of the information.
Just to clarify that, it's not, it's not whether or not, it's just to clarify whether or not if the new bylaw puts teeth into it that allows us to say yea or nay with regard to certain aspects of a person's project that they're looking to build, their home they're looking to build, what are our rights to say that you can put, you know, we don't want certain lighting and do, or, you know, that's the specific area that I want to get some sort of an opinion on?
I can, I can answer that question for you if you care.
I, I, I actually agree with you, Tom, but I, I like the, just for the.
Yeah, no, I, but for the rest of the board's education, you cannot make a decision purely on aesthetic criteria. Residential site plan review is largely aesthetic. The issue is site plan review. Whether it's commercial or residential, does it do anything? Has anybody ever appealed one? I, I can tell you there's very little case law on it. And the, and the part of bylaws and state laws of the old site plan review, there's just very little on it because it just doesn't happen.
So Tommy, you have, you.
For a special permit, just so everybody understands, is a completely different thing. And if we go that route, what we are doing is not getting into the aesthetics of lighting and arborvitae and stuff like that. We are, we are going to get into the question, is the size and bulk of the house substantially more detrimental to the area? Will we limit ourselves to the size and bulk issues, not those aesthetic issues? And the question is, do we want to go down that road? And do we want to say that houses over a certain size in Cohasset have to go through scrutiny with the possibility that if they're too big for the neighborhood, we're going to say no to them?
And what's critical with any, with any zoning bylaw is what can pass on the floor of town meeting? And, you know, being overly restrictive for homeowners or even potential prospectors is, is not gonna fly.
Well, and I just, yeah, and not only that, that's why they have zoning bylaws, right? And, and the bigger question on, in town meeting is gonna be, do they want the six of us to making, making decisions? Or the next six of us making decisions on what's gonna be built if they have a large home going on there? And that's a lot of power to place upon six people.
All we do is approve. We approve with conditions. That's the only teeth we have.
Right now.
Yeah. But we could say you have to plant, our condition is a, is a row of arborvitae. And that decision could be appealed, but it's still a decision.
I just, I want to point out something about the zoning bylaw. We already have by our lot coverage, area, blah, 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 all those other things. A limit is saying a house is going to be X size. And that limit cannot be exceeded because we're not gonna give you a variance. The question with this is, is there something? That's, that's what I would call the as-of-right limit that we have right now. Can't be exceeded, can't get a variance, because this town won't give variances with the correct process. The, the issue here is there's something slightly less than what is allowed as of right that we want to say because of its size and being close to the limit of the maximum size you're allowed, do we want it to go through an additional review process other than being allowed as of right? That's what we're discussing here. Right now, we, we have it, but we're, you know, a house of a certain size that's otherwise allowed as a right, and we're getting into site plan-ish aesthetic issues. And we're not getting into bulk of the house issues. And that's, that's our fundamental question of what we want to do.
Can we please?
And I remind everybody that.
Yeah, 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 wait a minute. I think, I think that, that we're going down a rabbit hole right now.
Give staff to, that have some things to talk about? I mean, Lauren and Jen.
We actually have still some business to do. So Jen?
I just wanted to put, try to make sure that we're being realistic about timelines. And I, if it's okay, I'll talk to Eric offline and get clear definition. I understand what he wants from, from Charis. But remember, opinions do take longer. So perhaps what's on the agenda next week is just the thought process behind the zoning bylaw if we don't have the opinion. I just don't want to let people down. I know Tom has already kind of given that, but if you want this, I just want to put realistic timelines on it.
Can you put it at the end of the agenda, so if we go a little long, it won't interfere with other?
We could do that.
Thank you.
And if, and if we go too late on everything else and we have to put it off, we'll put it off. Because I, we, we all agree we're not gonna, we all agree we're not operating under the timeline of getting ready for this town meeting. So it doesn't, it doesn't have the urgency I thought it had a week ago, so.
We have a placeholder on the, on the warrant.
I'm, I'm not sensing that we are going to get something put together that all six of us agree on.
I don't think you can make that assumption, but we'll, we'll work it.
Always hopeful, believe me, I don't think.
We can work it, but can we finish the meeting?
We will. Yeah, yeah, let's just, let me ask, do we have minutes to approve?
Yes, I sent you Angela's 10:14 minutes today.
All right, is there any other business? What did you say, Tom?
I move where you approve them.
Second?
Do I hear a second?
I said.
Can I get a voice vote?
Clark Brewer, aye.
Aye, Madam Chair, I had my hand up if, if I could.
All right.
Question.
Paul Colery?
Just trying to play by. Just trying to play by the rules. So I just wanted to ask something that Tom mentioned in his closing remarks, just the previous closing remarks. He said that something about a variance, I've been hearing this, you know, I'm new in town and I've been hearing this for five years, that we don't give out variances. I, I'm just curious. Maybe a discussion for a later date. I don't know.
I'll give it to you, try to give it to you quick. A variance is supposed to be a fairly unique form of relief. It's exceeding limits, whatever they may be, both as to uses and as to dimensions that you put in a bylaw. To get a variance, you have to demonstrate a hardship that is based on something unique about the topography of the lot. And it can't be a manufactured hardship that you as developer or homeowner have made. In many towns that I have dealt with with permits, as long as there's nobody in the audience waving in opposition, they're given out like candy. It's supposed to be an extraordinary remedy, rarely given. And our zoning bylaw takes that position and has for a very long time. And it has the reputation of doing that.
You said bylaw.
There are other towns around us that are also difficult to get a variance with. There are towns around us where it's easy to get one. Again, depending on who shows up to oppose it. If there's no opposition, a lot of times it'll sail through.
Are we going to close now?
All right. Can we, can we continue this conference? My recommendation, Paul Colery, my recommendation is talk to Woody. He'll be able to give you the skinny on what is going on there. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Recommendation.
Can I get a recommendation to adjourn?
We have minutes that we had voted to make a, we had a motion and a second, and we didn't vote on the minutes.
We did vote on it, Clark. Everybody voted on it.
Who cares about minutes? Let's just ensure.
We approved the minutes.
I did get a roll call for five people.
You have a roll call, right?
I did get a roll call. It's just it was very, there was a lot going on with the video.
Okay. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Can I get a second?
I think we all do.
Second, aye. Eric Potter, aye.
Aye.
Eric Potter, Paul Grady.
Aye.
Paul Colery.
Aye.
Tom Callahan. Thank you very much.
Good night, everybody.